Hey. Glad to bring this city council meeting to order. I'd like that first ask of all to stand and join in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Kevin, can you please do your call?
Kenny Bowers Schultz at Matt Meyer.
Here. Call our phone tip.
Here.
Kevin Murray.
Here.
That'll be well.
Here.
Okay. Um, was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting held on March 4th?
Make a motion to accept them as emailed.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Okay.
Um... We will start with... Rob, you want to start? We start us off. All right. You may have to, uh, there's a button.
Yeah.
Hold it. If you hold it down, there should be a light that comes on. This is your first test.
I'm good.
All right.
Does this work enough?
Yeah, it should, yeah, it records.
Just put a sticker on there to tell me. Thanks for the opportunity. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Rob Parker. I'm the director of Crossroads Community and Project Connect here in Adams County. I'd love to just give you guys just a bit of an update on what's going on. I feel like sometimes people miss it when they just don't keep everybody in a loop. These are community ventures. We can't do it by ourselves, so I want to make sure that everybody's in a loop on what's going to happen in our own backyard. So I'll start with Project Connect. There's been a lot of activity recently. We're about fifty days in on our jail reentry program. So we've had the opportunity to start creating, leading some internal programs. We've done some navigation, some reentry. So things have started out strong. Um... So inside programming, we're currently doing MRT, which is a counseling platform. Uh, we're doing Freedom Groups to the substance abuse community group. Uh, we're doing one-on-ones. We're doing navigation. So when they get out, some guys, we had two guys that got out just this past week. And when they got out, we meet them at the door and help them get connected to the community in meaningful ways. So the first part of this is programming inside. The second part is the community collaboration. So that is building partnerships with, with employers, with churches, with anybody who's doing anything in our own backyard. We don't, we're not trying to do everything ourselves. We're trying to build a collaborative model of doing things. So I don't have to know, I don't have to have all the answers. I just need to know the people who do. So that's the second part of it, is really knowing the people in our own backyards, being good neighbors to people. You know, that's how we do it. I've got a goal to have a million cups of coffee with people by the time I retire. So that's how I choose to do it, you know? So if you ever did a call for me, it's probably, we're probably getting ready to have coffee. Uh, but that's the idea, is then that we can bridge the gap between guys and gals come out of our county jail, out of prisons, that are coming back to Adams County. And we can be the bridge to connect them to all these different resources, relationships, and opportunities that they're going to need to thrive. So that's what we're working on right now. It's that model. We just signed a lease on our office. I was going to tell you guys where it was at. I forgot already the address. But we do have a new office that we just signed a lease for. And it is at 103 North Third Street. So just catty corner from the big courthouse. It's close to probation. It's right downtown. It's going to be a place where people can go when they get out, get services, to get connected. We'll probably do some groups there and things like that. So...
Where is 103 North Third? I know where Third Street is from.
The old Rose Hotel.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. The old hotel. Actually, the people that we rented from, her dad was a pastor when it was in the church. So when I thought of what we were doing, it just felt, it was a really good set.
Do you want to open up? Open up in early.
Yeah. Mark's taking several weeks off to try to get things in order over there. Also, our team is myself as the director, Sarah Giroffit, formerly of Adams County probation. She's running, she's the program manager inside the jail. And then we have one, one navigator right now, Caleb Hallit. Um... So our future plans is, I'm always, I'm always compelled, I don't want to get pigeonholed. Like, our whole thing isn't the jail. Our whole thing is making sure that we can do our part, that Adams County is the most connected, healthiest version of itself. That's what we, that's what we want to do. So that's, that, we're not going to limit ourselves to any one population of people. We just, we want to provide this navigation resource to the people that are coming out of hard places. Uh, the collaboration, now this is kind of tricky. I'm, I'm the director of both, but there's a huge collaboration between Crossroads and, um, Project Connect. So we just, you guys approved, um, the zoning for the new house on, I have that address too. 519 North Second. That's where I was here last. I was here with Kevin Biggs. You guys gave us approval. Thank you for that. And we're getting really, really close. That'll give us the opportunity to service six more people. Um, and we're very excited. That would make our third transitional living house, uh, community in Adams County. So... Um, my guests, just in closing, we feel we've been called and equipped to do just what we're doing right now. We appreciate everybody's support, and we have no plans to slow down. So, uh, we're just going to continue to do our part, so like I said, to make Adams County the best possible version of ourselves. So I just want to give you an update on what was going on. If anybody has any questions, there'll be more than one answer.
I think first of all, I'll say, Rob, just thank, thank you for what you guys are doing. Uh, I know you guys hit a lot of roadblocks when you first started. Um, well, I don't even know if you were with them when they first started. But, um, you know, people, people fall in tough times, and it's not those people. The, the, those people we're talking about are friends, family members. It can be anyone. It could be a neighbor that you don't know that's struggling with an addiction or some problems. Um, these people are trying to find help, and you guys are, you guys are there to help them. So I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
I have a question. I got a call from Tony Melencamp last week about a sign, interested in some sort of signage.
Absolutely.
Um, and so I didn't know what, what you had planned, but if you want to get ahold of me or Kurt, we can help you out with what that sign ordinance is and what, what's allowed, what's not allowed.
Sounds great.
I don't know off the top of my head, but yeah, okay. I was just making sure.
And he sent somebody out. There's an existing, like, two posts with a sign holder.
Yeah.
Uh, who used to be for the church. And they went out and looked at it and they said, "We, we can use that." I think we're planning on maybe rehabbing that up, and when I have some designs, I'll bring it up.
Yeah.
That's fine. I was just making sure you're getting what you need.
Yep. The advice I would give you is just stay in contact with Kurt.
Sounds good.
Makes everybody happy.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
How many clients have you served?
I couldn't even tell you. I know that we, we have currently, we have two people this week from the jail that are now in, uh, you know, like a rehab program that we connected to. We have three people that are in transitional living. We've had probably, oh, we have fifty people, forty people that we've met with at some level, off and on. It's quite few.
And you guys have a house in Burn currently too, right?
Two. Yeah. Women's house and a men's house. The men's house has been full with a waiting list for months. So the men's house and the caterers work super aside. Plus, some of those people, those people don't want to be in Burn. Like, they work here, they just work at pump. So it'll be nice to have the option for both, you know, the northern and the southern part of the community. Thank you so much.
All right.
Thank you for the opportunity, gentlemen.
Good.
Thank you.
Can we turn this off?
Nope. Leave it right on there. Take care. Okay. We have the group from Safe Adams County that showed up, so we'll let you guys go next.
Well, we were told that you started early.
We did. We did. The weather's so nice out there, but we're trying to get back out there.
Our group is kind of scattered tonight because we have some, like, kindergarten registration, uh, uh, something going on at the curfew server, so...
Thank you.
Sandy's not here.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Bye. Is it okay if I just stand here?
Yeah.
Do I have to use the microphone?
You're fine. You're fine. We can hear you.
Oh, I'm Cindy Tini. And, uh, our safe person, Sandy Andrew Mount, has been around for quite a while now. And we do want to prevent child abuse, and that's our main goal, is to make happy, healthy families and children, and support people in any way that we can. Um, next month, April is Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month. And so we've asked to have a proclamation read. He's actually gonna get in, if you want to get in. Um, what we've had done in the past, a proclamation read, um, just to make people aware. Um, a couple dates that I'd like to share. We usually have a family and children's celebration at courthouse in April. And we're going to have it April 1st at noon. And that's where we have speaker. And this year, I think I'm allowed to say, say that Dan Maymore is going to be our speaker this time.
Okay.
And then we'll plant, um, the pinwheel garden out, put all the pinwheels out in front of the courtyard. Um, and then, um, our carnival is going to be Saturday, April 26th. It's later in the month this year. Um, so it will be April 26th from 9 to 11 at Riverside Center. And we're doing something new this year. In addition to the big room having all the games, we're going to use one of the smaller rooms, have a small room to put, uh, resource, uh, have it like a resource fair. And people can have information for parents and, and, um, we, we want to make sure that it's geared toward kids. So if you have anything to hand out for little people, for kids, that would be good. Um, but it's information to help parents too. So, um, letters will be sent out to different organizations if they want to be a part of it. And, um, there's information on that for a send, doesn't have the, I think Ian Gilbert's getting involved, is it? I don't know if he's here. But, um, I think Sandy's and Ian Gilbert's names are the ones. Is that right? You remember? Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, we have Mary here, Marion, and, um, oh my God, I'm very sorry. She's, she's from Marion or someplace far away. Waltham? Yeah. Far away. Yeah. So we have, our group has grown so much over the years, and we get so many new organizations helping, um, to provide resources and information and ideas on how we can help kids and families in the community. And you're with...
Family Food Services.
Okay. And then we have one down from Firefly, and, oh my goodness, I can't remember.
Healthy Hands.
Yeah. And, and really Safe is under the umbrella of Healthy Families. So we're very involved with them too, now Sarah and her group. But anyway, um, we're just really excited to try this new thing with our carnival and hopefully get a good response from businesses and people. And, uh, we just appreciate everybody supporting us the way that they have.
Great.
Good. Good. So April 1st at noon at the courthouse, and then April 26th is the carnival.
Yes.
Okay. Great.
From 9 to 11. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We got them.
We got them.
Yes. Thank you.
Are we ready to drop the nation?
Yes, please.
Okay. First, just thanks for what you guys do. This is a great call, so appreciate it. Whereas child abuse and neglect in a community condition and problem is a community and condition of the problem, and funding, finding, I don't have my readers on. No. And finding solutions depends on involvement and low people in the community. Whereas the effects of child abuse and neglect are felt by all communities and need to be addressed by the entire community. Whereas Prevent Child Abuse Indiana and Safe in Adams County are sponsoring several events throughout the month to heighten public awareness of prevention in communities and the state. These events will provide information and materials and support families to prevent child maltreatment and celebrate people who work with and support children and families. And whereas a statewide Pinwheels for Prevention campaign has been launched through the media, public schools, libraries, social service agencies, and businesses during the month of April to celebrate and bring awareness of the great potential of all children in Indiana and the need to strengthen all families with support and nurturing. And whereas the Pinwheels for Prevention campaign includes the planting of pinwheel gardens statewide, celebrating community partnerships for strengthening the family and protecting all children from abuse and neglect. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Whereas all citizens should become more aware of the power of prevention within the community and become, become more involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Now therefore, I, Daniel R. Rickards, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month in Decatur, and call upon all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to prevent child abuse, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Signed this 18th day of March 2025. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll just copy them.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Cindy. Cindy.
Oh, I'm Cindy Tini.
I know you. I know you. Everybody knows you. No. You've been here for a hundred years.
I know. Mary Birch.
Chris Garrett.
B-E-R-G-S-P-H. And...
Chris Garrett. P-H-R.
G-A-R-R? G-A-R-R-E-T-T. G-A-R, yes. The bright way to spell Chris. Oh, I don't have them right now. Um, I'm looking at the phone right now.
Jamie, what's up?
She's not there anymore.
You have those.
She's not got one anymore.
Okay. I'm just kidding.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, first, we have some guests here, and they hadn't had a chance to introduce themselves. Who wants to start?
I'm Quinn Buchanan.
What grade?
Um, I'm in 11th grade. I go to Beaumont.
Okay.
I'm reading a conference day, and I'm in 11th grade. I go to Beaumont.
I'm Kim LaCocke. I'm in 10th grade. I go to Beaumont.
I'm Ash Lumber. I'm in 12th grade, and I also go to Beaumont.
All right. Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. So Jamie, you have some, uh, event applications. Um, where do you want to start?
Yeah. I'll just go through them. So we have a Madison Street Plaza rental application for a graduation party on Saturday, May 31st. Uh, that'll be from 2 to 5, with setup from 12 to 5. And Candy Jarvis is the contact for that. I have all of the information that's needed for that event.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Okay. And then we have the Summer Concert Series. And this starts Thursday, June 3rd, and goes until Thursday, September 4th. Um, that last September 4th concert is the partnership with the hospital. Um, and these are the Decatur Chamber of Commerce events. They take place on Madison Street Plaza. Approximately 6:00 to 9:30 would be the timing difference. Some of them are 7:00 to 9:00, some are 6:00 to 9:00. Um, they are requesting that First Street is closed, and there's a sign at the craft block on Second Street. During the Five Points construction, First Street will remain open, and the food will all be in the parking lot area. Um, and then a police officer will be available to help with crossing. Uh, that'll probably be for June, but we'll just be, it'll just depend on the construction.
Yeah. We talked about the surgery today, and I think, um, depending on when Five Point starts, it's supposed to be ninety days. I've heard April, I've heard May, and I've heard June, so, um, I just don't think we can have First Street closed, uh, especially for EMS going east. So we're going to have to figure out a way to do it. First Street open.
Very similar conversation I'm having with Jamie today. Being fluid and trusting the police to know when to close streets or not.
Right.
Try to be open more than not be.
Yeah. So guess we'll need a motion to approve those. And so we...
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? All right. Hold the same sign. Okay.
Okay. And then the Decatur Sculpture Tour. Um, that unveiling is Saturday, June 14th. There's a reception at the Hive on Friday, June 13th. And the only thing that is requested for that is there will be cones out in front of the parking spots in front of the Hive. Um, and there'll be some cocktail tables for overflow guests on the sidewalk in front of the Hive. And then for Saturday, there are street closures. Um, Saturday morning is whenever the sculptures get installed, and then the actual tour is from 3:00 to 5:00. So the street closure is from 6:00 AM until 9:00 AM. Second Street from Monroe to Court Street. Um, and like I said, that's for the install. That will then open up at 9 o'clock. And then we will close at 9 o'clock until after the tour, which is around 5:00 PM. Second Street from Court Street to Adams Street will be closed, and that will be for the rest of the install. So then from 1:00 until 5:00, Court Street from Second to the alley, Madison Street from Second to the alley, and then Second Street from Monroe to Adams. So re-closing that Court Street from Monroe Street. And that again will be done at 5:00.
Any questions there?
I know that's a lot.
I know. And I, she went out and talked to Matt today. And I think that's great that she's talking to business owners and they're just figuring out, how can we best review, uh, also still having an event that's successful and...
Trying to accommodate not closing the street all day.
Right. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
We'll roll with it. I'll make the motion to approve.
All second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay.
All right. And then that same day, Saturday, June 14th, is Connor Bright's Flower Flowers Benefit Concert. That takes place on Madison Street Plaza. Uh, that is from 6:00 until 10:00, and they'll start setting up at noon. That one, uh, normally closes First Street because of the food, but I, uh, did get ahold of them. And if the construction is going on, they'll have enough space in that parking lot to be able to utilize that and not close First Street.
Okay. Another great event. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in two seconds. All in there?
Aye.
All right. Hold the same sign. I made it.
I made the motion.
Let's try to write.
And then the Decatur Main Street Downtown Decatur Day is the next weekend, Saturday, June 21st. And that takes place on the plaza and then downtown. So that again is Saturday, June 21st. Street closures will start at 6:00 AM, and the event is actually from 10:00 until 3:00. So the street closures, they're requesting our Second Street from Jackson to Jefferson Street, but Monroe Street stays open, so that doesn't close. And then from Court Street between Second and Third, just to the alley, from Madison Street between Second and Third Street. And then this year, from Third Street, just between Court Street and Madison Street, because they're adding a car show. So all the cars will be around the courthouse. Um, and if they have to close Third Street, they'll just close that area. So they'll be able to get through the alley and the parking lot. And then again, on Madison Street Plaza. And that's the Main Street event.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Okay. And then we have the Chamber of Commerce's Fourth of July Celebration. And they're leaving this on a Thursday, so the celebration will actually be Thursday, July 3rd. And that takes place at the Riverside Center. That's from 6:00 until 10:00, and they'll start setting up at 3:00. Um, the street closure would be Jackson Street, near the bridge, and then the Craft Block site.
Why don't they do it on the 4th?
They said that since Thursday is the day before, instead of booking two bands, I think, they went with just keeping it on a Thursday.
Oh.
So that is, what, okay, sorry, so it's...
So it's Thursday, July 3rd.
And that's going to be the fireworks?
Fireworks will be that day.
The Chamber event. That's what they want to do.
Yep.
Keep more people in town might be better.
Yeah. I guess some people might not have left for the wake yet, maybe.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hold the same.
All right. And then we have German Fest, which is a Chamber of Commerce event. And that takes place on Saturday, August 16th on the plaza. That is from 5:00 until 10:00, and they'll start setting up at 3:00. Um, street closures would be First Street, and then requesting the crossing sign on Second Street.
Okay. That was August 16th.
Saturday, August 16th. Yep.
What time did you say?
5:00 to 10:00.
5:00 to 10:00.
Okay.
Another very popular event. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay.
So then we have the Kiki Yanda Festival, which is another, uh, Chamber of Commerce event. That takes place Friday, August 22nd, Saturday, August 23rd, and then Sunday, August 24th. That's at the Riverside Center and the Craft Block. That, um, they'll start setting up Thursday, and they are asking for street closures just on Friday, which is the education day. That is from 8:00 until 2:00, and that's the bridge to the Craft Block site.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same.
All right. And then we have the Motorsports Car Show, Decatur Chamber of Commerce. That's Thursday, August 28th. Uh, it's going to be downtown. The registration is at 3:00, and it ends when the Thursday night concert ends, so 9:00, 9:00 to 9:30. They are asking that Second Street between, um, Monroe to Court Street is closed, and then Third Street between, from Jefferson into Madison Street. And then First Street would be closed where the concert normally has their closure.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? All right. Hold the same sign. Guess we have more.
Right. We have the Highland Games, which is the Chamber of Commerce. That is Saturday, October 4th. Um, that's from noon to 6:00. And they're asking for street closures from on Jackson Street, from the bridge to Craft Block site.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same.
Okay. Just a couple more.
Hey, this is great. This is great. I always talk about how we have festivals we have.
So we have the Calumbean Parade, which is Chamber of Commerce.
That is Monday, October 27th, and that's on the plaza and then the parade route. So they're asking, that's from 27 until 9 o'clock. They're asking on Sunday, the 26th, that Madison Street closes between Second and Third at 4 o'clock, and then that stays closed until after the parade. Second Street closes after the buses go through, between Monroe to Jackson Street, and then Monroe actually closes at 6:45 until after the parade.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
Okay, now who did that one? I didn't know you did.
All right, and then we have the Christmas Tree Lighting, and that is Friday, November 21st. That is from 4 o'clock until 8:30, and that setup will start at 2:30. The street closures would be Second Street, between Monroe and Court Street, and then Madison Street, between Second and Third.
I missed that one, Jamie. What is that one?
The Christmas Tree Lighting.
Oh.
Do you have a start time, do you say a start time?
4 o'clock. I don't know the exact date of like the tree lighting time or any of that, but...
What was the date?
It's Friday, November 21st.
Thanks.
I can motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
All right, that's everything I have right now.
Already?
Okay, great.
Okay.
I don't have those yet.
Okay, so, last one, do you have anything else that we can do with discussion?
Yeah, a couple things. Just need to make a matter of record, mayor's appointment from the school board to the redevelopment commission, Dave Hill.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side. Dave Hill was appointed to the redevelopment commission from the school board. My appointment from the school board.
And then I was just gonna update, we talked last time about fire trucks. I spoke with one local bank, get some financing costs, he was able to get me that. Jeff had some new news this morning, that there may be another route to get a truck, so we'll wait to kick the tires on that and see what that options are, and there may be another route besides the stock or the waiting four years. So once we get all that information, we'll come back and, yeah, well, once we see what some of these property taxes are gonna be for the next few years, that'll help make that decision also.
Okay. So last on the agenda is the discussion over the DORA, which is the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. We've talked about it a couple times a little bit. I think Ann's researched some different ordinances. There's cities all over the state that have adopted ordinances, and they're all different. I mean, they're different times, when they allow them, if it's to events, weekends, whatever, different cups they use. This is convoy Ohio's cup they use for their DORA. There's all kinds of different options and things to talk about. I don't know if Ann, you wanna discuss a little bit?
Yeah, the process, anyway, starts with council passing an ordinance establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area, and that requires us to have made certain decisions about where, the geography of the boundary line that encompasses the actual DORA area, and who would be considered a designated permittee. So that needs establishment that already has a catering license, liquor license, so we need to talk with those establishments and allow them to decide whether or not they want to participate, because it takes active measures on their part to get approved. And once we pass the ordinance, we would send in their application for approval to the ATC, and I have copies of the state-regulated form that they would need to complete. But that also may influence where our perimeter is. So if we can have a meeting, or if I can entertain a couple of city council members to work with me, to reach out to the local bars and restaurants that may be a part of it, it might help define the boundary lines for DORA. But within that, or outside of the boundary line, council also needs to consider time. What are the, what's a reasonable timeframe for permitting the DORA to be in operation? State law allows it to operate pretty much throughout the week, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 AM. If it wants to be that broad, there are several communities that just say we'll keep it in line with Indiana, with state law. Others can make it more specific, that it is just tailored to festivals and events that are approved for the downtown, or for their downtowns, or whatever area, it doesn't have to be a downtown area, but whatever area they have designated.
Yeah, I think Fort Wayne has three different areas, so they just, they pick and choose where they want to...
Yeah, each community can have up to seven different DORA areas within their community. As far as I know, we're only considering one. Within, and then additional decisions that need to be made, you have to indicate on your, within your ordinance, where signage is going to be located. So there needs to be both a design and ordering, and an ability to display those, that signage on those designated spots. And then you can elect to have a cup, you don't necessarily, they're not required, communities may decide whether or not to utilize their own DORA cup. And a designated permittee, like I said, is a bar or restaurant within the area that elects to sell alcoholic beverages to patrons that are allowed to then walk and move about within the designated area. No cups or beverages would be allowed to be taken out of that, so along boundaries and crosswalks, that's specifically where signage would need to be located, that you're either entering or leaving a DORA perimeter, and that you need to dispose of your cup or your beverage at that point. Nothing would prevent any establishment that participates from electing on their own whether or not a beverage can be brought into their establishment. So say Vinnie's and Two Brothers are both participants, and someone buys a beverage at Vinnie's and walks directly over to Two Brothers, Two Brothers could elect not to allow them to bring it in, and vice versa. So they retain that, that right to exclude any outside cup to come in. And then anyone purchasing from a vendor or designated permittee would be able to have up to two beverages purchased at its... There are some, like I said, there are some decisions that council needs to take into consideration in making this. I always feel bad, I feel like I can sit to one side or another. So I don't know how much discussion wants to be had tonight, if anyone is up for a short meeting to help create some guidance that would go into...
I guess you should establish, what is our ultimate goal in having this? What, why, what benefit does it serve, or what would we, our community benefit by having this ordinance?
So I can tell you, like in St. Joe, Michigan, they have a little shopping area with them, then they have some craft beer and winery places there, and it allows the tourists to grab a craft beer or a glass of wine and walk through the area and look and shop. So that's the question here, do you want it for the car show, for things like that, if you want to make that available?
If we want some beer and a bit of jewelry.
That could be too. Yep.
It also creates a perimeter where only beverages purchased from designated permittees or vendors can be consumed within the DORA area, so it does prevent outside, people bringing in their own, or packing coolers, or, and so it does maybe even promote a little bit more business within the downtown area, or keep it there, or limit consumption to a degree.
And as soon as the state law allowed it, Representative from the American Legion came to see me and asked, when is the city getting on board with this?
Right.
Well, this is new to us too, so we're having to have these discussions.
So that's one of the things that would fix the headache at the concerts between the vendor and Legion, because there's a long draw in the city in there where people can't cross, and this would make it a lot simpler for them in that area.
I know Bluffton, I spoke with the city council in Bluffton, they decided they could stay with the state law, which is pretty broad, time-wise, and they opened up a pretty big area that they want to allow it within, and then their thought process was, and if we want to bring it in from there, we could, or get rid of it, as far as that goes. I know I received an email, and you probably all did as well, from a resident downtown that was above their building, that is not in favor of this, enlisted various reasons of like, they don't think it's a good idea, and you're gonna get that, certainly. I then go to our concerts, which we've had for how many years now, with very few problems with law enforcement, and when needed, law enforcement has been there to do what they have to do.
Right. Allowing someone to carry it on their own doesn't cause a problem.
Right.
Person being stupid causes a problem, and that's why we have law enforcement.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, we've had no problems with the county.
Right, right.
If you restrict it by, is it as much as like date, or can you say German Fest, does it need to be on from October 2nd to October 3rd in the ordinance, when you, if you restrict it by, if you would restrict it by events? I just didn't know if it's...
I think you can create kind of a formula as to when it's approved. I think it would be the wording in the ordinance, so if it would be only at specific, it's only in existence on specific dates and times, based on events approved by the common council of the city of Decatur, it could be framed in that mechanism.
I just didn't know if we'd have to change the ordinance every year, if it was limited to those, if you had to change it to August 1st and August 19th, if that was the route, but...
I don't think you have to get that specific, I think you can...
You could say summer concert series, and Highland Games, and Motorsports.
You could potentially identify specific known events, you could leave it to events that are approved by council, you could, if you didn't want to make it the entire week, and you just wanted to have DORA on Thursdays through Saturdays at 3:00 AM, you can, we can craft this as broad or limited as we would like, we just need to make those decisions sooner rather than later.
I'd like to hear from more restaurant bar owners, what do they want, or not? And from more citizens. I've heard from one, with their opinion, is this something they want or not?
And I guess the undisclosed area, businesses in that area, do they want it? They want, do they participate? Does it benefit them or not?
Right.
Most of them close by the time I get home, so...
Okay.
Is it something we should have Main Street involved with? Or does it not impact them, or, does it impact their trying to be certified thing?
Uh, no, I mean, there's many certified Main Streets that have doors. Yeah. And like Matt said, it can be tailored after a certain year, after you find out mistakes you made. I can tell you, when this legislation was passed into law last year, it was set, but what it didn't realize was that someone that lived above in a downtown apartment was not allowed to go to a store and buy a bottle of wine, or a case of beer, and bring it into their house, because they were buying it and bringing it into a DORA. So that's all gonna be changed in law this year. So you'll figure things out as you go.
Yeah. Excludes, and excludes residential property.
Right, right, but it didn't last year as law, as written.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Oversight.
Unintended, yeah, unintended consequence.
Right, right. So I think Jamie's just asking for people to maybe start a committee to reach out to residents, bar owners, restaurants, or business owners, and get some feedback.
Maybe have you help that? Okay, fantastic. Jamie, I'll probably be enlisting you?
Yeah.
Okay.
If Max is willing, he owns a restaurant that sells alcohol, that is part of the Main Street.
He's also president of the Main Street, right? I think it'd be great to have him on.
It'd be great to have him on your committee, if he's willing.
I've been put on a lot of committees just because I wasn't there when they formed me, so I think Max would be great.
That means Jenny's on, too. I was gonna say, I'll put Pop Jenny on here. Pop Jenny on there, would you?
And the commander of the Legion, Yokolet, John.
John, John Yokolet.
Was the first one to approach me within days of the legislation being allowed.
I think this cleans up a lot of stuff on Madison Street, it's been playing that for a while. I mean, there's a lot of issues there. Right. And I think, just like, as you reach out to businesses, you may find out this area you thought you were gonna use, maybe it just shrinks down because people aren't interested.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anything else from you two? Chris, ready?
Yes, Zach S. is our new air officer. I assume he goes to training in June.
Great, love to see that, love to see that. Good. Jeff?
Yes.
Kurt?
Good.
Aaron?
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Kurt, too. Jamie?
Happy birthday.
Kerry? I'm gonna ask that people keep, former mayor of Burns, Bill McKee, his family and their thoughts. He passed away last Friday, and his viewing is this Thursday, and the funeral's Friday, so... Anything from council?
I do have something. I reached out to Jeremy, who I now know he's out of town. There was on, there's several of these Decatur discussion forums online, and a legitimate complaint, I guess, was, we have a good problem with lots of recycling, and Elm Street sometimes is overflowing, so some of it takes to the air and is blowing about the neighborhood. I don't know what can be done. Tarps, fencing, something like that. Just want to at least bring it up to let the residents know we do hear you sometimes, you know? But we have a good problem with lots of people using this for cycling, but I agree, the guy said, I don't really appreciate picking up trash in my yard every day.
Yeah.
But I don't blame him.
No, I agree. I think, I think there's been discussion about a fence down there, I think it normally blows towards the east, or, yeah, east.
That's something I wanted to bring up, that we will address from the city.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
Wait, anything from public? Anything from public? Anybody got anything to say?
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you. Motion to pay the claims?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.
And a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold, same side.